I'd like to welcome everybody today. Board Supervisors Work Session Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, four thirty P M. Main Conference Room, County Administration, Hill One, Senate Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Farman?
Here.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Dr. Mellor?
Here.
Mr. Layton?
Present. Do we have any items to add to the agenda? Can I have an approval of the agenda?
Make motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Fairman, please.
Mr. Scares? Second. Do I have any, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please pass your head. Albert, will you pass on our question?
The agenda has been adopted, thank you. For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded, can be viewed on the same YouTube location at the Board Supervisors Business Meeting. Please remember that the Board's work session is designed for internal board and county staff communication, discussion, work, discussion and work, that is. It is not a question and answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outburst of disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the all pending persons removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties are designed, are designated by the Board's bylaws, are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the citizens' section of tonight's business meeting. Presentations, do we have any? Okay, number six, staff committee and or constitutional officers, that changed. Now, Mr. Hicks? Solid Waste Convenience Site, time, thank you. David Sutton.
In fact, at a prior meeting, we gave you updates on the three proposed convenience centers we have purchased the land. And prior to moving forward, you asked if we could give you a schedule and sort of a cost estimate as to what we would anticipate spending this fiscal year, so I'll give you an update on that.
The cost proposed by our, our, um, engineers would be thirty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, that's for the permits, the plans, the specifications, and getting the project ready to be done. They have a proposed completion date of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty. So those plans and specs would be completed until August of two thousand twenty. There were, during the bidding process, during construction, would be an estimated, or a cost of twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Same thing for the second site on Level Run Road, the cost for the plans and specs and the solely road control permits and all that, had to be ready to be big bids again, would be thirty-seven thousand nine hundred again during construction, for the bidding and monitoring, construction documents, obviously, again, would be twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. The third site, Tom, is our proposed regional center, which would be off of, um, the US twenty-nine. This is a much bigger site, this one, would be more involved, the estimated permits and design costs, that would be sixty-three, nine sixty, and then during bidding and construction, it would be thirty-two, nine forty. They, the plans and specs on that site, they started November the first, will be finished March of twenty twenty. What we were supposed to do is once we do next year's budget, we'll decide which sites should be constructed first, or if it was two sites or all sites that, you know, that possibly could be built in the next fiscal year. But the call for the current fiscal year we're in, would be the thirty-seven nine for the two sites, and the sixty-three nine sixty for the third and our other site. We currently have about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And what we are proposing to spend, you know, for the site, if I had to lay down, and if the permit for all three sites would be the eight, two valves and one night. We have gotten a bid on the paving of the mountain, Tom Herman Center, that's where my site would be driving, there's a huge drop off in the back, and it's not conducive to, you know, the people using it, so you got people backing up, trying to turn around in front of other people. So we can finish that loop for thirty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. Same thing for the Smith Mountain Lake Convenience Center, we just have one gate, and it's the same, just way people following it, and you got people backing up, trying to get around the other. People, we could put a second gate at that site for about nine thousand some dollars, you know, so they would enter into the second gate, and it would exit the gate, that would be the closest to the highway. Block was under construction. It was ninety-five thousand dollars for the original deal. We did have to make an adjustment to the existing concrete, had so we, you know, in a, not all the water, which was seventeen hundred dollars. And we tore up the pavement, the interest, and we find that we had absolutely no stone under that asphalt, so that's why it was falling all to pieces. Still, we added about five inches of stone there, it cost about thirty-two hundred dollars. We're still working on some of the existing compapers, they haven't been touched since they were installed, and breaking them all the time, the boxes, you know, have always been at the end of the road. We think this will take about fifty thousand more dollars to get through this fiscal year. We have about four compapers right now that are in diameter, and the Roswell site, we've got a new valve. So we're looking at a total projected capital cost for current fiscal year we're in, if you authorize all of this, would be two hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. And we could probably start in the big construction on this renewed site, send your FY twenty, twenty-one budget. And it's time to say, Ringo, there's a terrible sign out, we've only got one box there, and one box will not last us from Friday to Monday. There is just a small section of pavement there, so it's very difficult to get it out. We think there, we need more land, so we don't have any capital costs projected there yet. And the Motley site, I mean, we talked about it being a larger site also, and that land is controlled by, uh, let's see, VDOT, and they have said they could probably lease us some of that, condition of land or sell it. So those two sites, I think they would be more long-term, but they do need to span, they would do the, uh, the plan at both of those sites. I think that's all I have. If you got any questions, we are asking to the Board of Arbitrations, for the Board's meeting on five fifty-five this evening to move forward on these sites. As I mentioned, the only two sites we won't fix will be the seven twenty-nine, the modern center, Motley Center, but we do need strong looking at, 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 finally, the purchase of all these sufficient land on both of those sites. Mr. Hicks, will this reduce, or to what extent do you think it will reduce that continuing purchase of rock you would have to make? I'd say Mount Herman, in the last five or six years, we've probably spent all the length of stone, stone, constantly, you know, to add stone to these sites, with those big trucks, and they, they, in Washington, and Washington, cars all around, and they turn around, and a lot of the stuff, they give up, you know, the, the, the cost of the stone will pay for itself, and just, you know, exactly.
All right, the, the one in Brawls, is that addition, when that money already appropriated, or is this?
We're spending that, my family.
Yeah, you're very.
Yeah, that's already been approved, I mean, showing that.
I guess, of course, it's two eighty-one fifty-five, five fifty-five, is it, is that minus?
How many clues say it?
Okay, so that money's already been appropriated, so it ain't actually the amount of money?
Yeah, we've already approved that in the budget, haven't we?
Yes. So what I'm saying, if you take off a hundred Brawls, it's one eighty-one, somewhere around that?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
That money, that's what I thought, it's already been approved?
Some of additional expenditures that you have in order to. And we're just showing one, I put costs, you know, would be this fiscal year, if we went forward on the other portions of this.
Mr. Hicks, on the Route twenty-nine site, now that I've drafted in sort of future thinking of what that's going to look like, I'm not trying to add any more cost to us, but for safety concerns, traveling northbound and turning into that site is very difficult, very tight. I'd be curious, now that we have time, sounds like we have eight months, turn the design phase, if not longer, you know, do you have one of your drivers make that route and turn into there and give some feedback?
Okay.
Um.
If you turn a right?
Yes, sir. Travel north of twenty-nine, you hang a right into that complex. One, there's no turnoff, I don't believe, like a deceleration lane?
Right.
But that, that's an extremely tight turn for our vehicles.
Yes. If we had to, we could come from the other.
I thought through, I thought through that, but then your citizens, you know, who's to say that they might not be in the same situation?
Yeah, and we'll take a look at that when they.
Do we have to get any approval from VDOT for that? I mean, you would think they would have to sign off on any changes without any.
Since it's off of that highway, we should be okay with a basic, you know, permanent for the driveway, so for the edge of the way. Mr. Hicks, assuming that the twenty twenty-one budget would remain consistent with the current budget, what I'm seeing here is we're going to have about two hundred, let's see, it's two hundred, two twenty-nine, about two fifty, roughly, in unused funds, capital funds, to start out the next budget. And we would assume we would have another five twenty-nine to do, just to at least get the other projects going. Okay. Now, also, next year, we have our last debt service payment on the, the land there, along by order.
Yes, sir.
I guess, because of the open C O B, so that money would be about three hundred and something thousand dollars, that money. Three hundred and some thousand a year? Yeah. Look, so that money might be a, basically. So what are you going to hand over in meetings, office?
Yes, sir.
Maybe not quite that much, but I'd say maybe seven hundred, seven fifty.
Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
One of the things that we discussed in the committee, and I thought that we agreed that we would pursue, is on the northern end of the county and being somewhere on the southern, so the contractors will not have to travel so far, is to locate somewhere where they could drop off refuse.
See, I thought that would be the Motley site, that's why I'm saying that one needs to be larger.
Right.
And I think, you know, VDOT said we could probably lease some of the additional property, I might buy some additional property, because they control everything in that.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
So that's a.
So we've already had some conversation with them, so that's a long-term plan, and they'll get something, right?
Sure. I got a question, I guess it's all the things is, as far as that next land sale opening, is there any money that's put towards that?
Great question.
Or should we, the three hundred thousand, we're coming out of debt service, they're going to have to go towards that?
As the funds are currently coming in and being allocated, the answer's no. But we anticipate, and we're in the final weeks of negotiating with the county of Bedford for their flow, and their charges will pay for our capital needs to open the next sale. So we will, we'll basically give it up to the next sale with our county tax period, it will be two million, we will pay for that, and we'll be ready to pay that. We will have enough to pay for the next sale in FY twenty-three, or twenty-four, by the fourth year of the financial contract. So the answer is no, we're not setting aside money, the answer is yes, if things go the way it looks like they're going, we will.
And we should have something like the, uh, that in the November meeting.
Yeah, we'll need a solid waste committee meeting before the next Board Supervisors meeting to discuss all that.
I see, if you got there, you would pay all of your capital costs in the hand, and read for about two million, three million, in the first five years, which can go along by these forces, against some of these other capital costs.
Debt services, completely. One of the things is very important is that we look at setting aside some of that money, still spending everything that we take in, like we did this last, how to pack up, we need to start setting some underside.
Yeah, I agree. And keep in mind, this is all solid waste fee, it has stayed in solid waste fund, so.
Then we can't stay outside.
Well, I agree.
We still subsidize them with general fund money, are we not?
It's all separately, I mean, it's all being covered by this solid waste fee.
Not the capital cost, too. A hundred and twenty dollars, that's about three point two million, and the budget for us over four hundred million, over four million.
Gate, gate fees?
You've got tipping fees and other things associated.
Yeah, enough ancillary revenue, myself, and you're agreeing.
So we close.
Yeah, but we're not allocating Richard, proportion of Richard's salary, and our due to be paid.
Okay, we got any more hairs to split, I like that, I agree. Any further discussion? Okay, so we need to move, movement on this number council?
Um, there's actually a, an action item on tonight's meeting, under management from the work session.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Next. Mr. Moore, Parks and Recreation. Appreciate it, Mr. Moore, appreciate you being here.
Glad to be here, thank you for having me, wanted to, um, I don't think I need to come through anything here. Um, I wanted to give you a Wayside Park update. Uh, one thing I wanted to pass around while I do that is, Pennsylvania County Historical Society, they do a, an ornament each year of historical landmarks in the county, and I was out at the Festival, Cowans Festival, a few weeks ago, and this year's ornament is the swinging bridge at Wayside Park. They contacted me a few, probably a few months ago, for some of the historical information that we had received, discovered, found on the park, and so that information's on the back of the ornament. So I wanted to pass that around while we, while I give you an update on the playground and the park itself. So we've been working to tick things off the list for the Wayside Park project, since it's up on, in front of you and on the, on the screen, we'll talk about the playground. This playground is a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, completely paid for with grant funding for the project. It is the largest single purchase that we'll make in the park. It is, in my opinion, one of the most important features of, that we're adding to the park. It will be a destination playground, this will be a destination park when it's done, after the playground and the, all the updates that we're doing to the park. A few things about the playground area, it'll have a hundred-foot zip line on it, it will have, the playground incorporates things from the park, has earth tone colors for a rural park, it has a swinging bridge on the playground, it has rock features, a rock climbing wall, it has a small train there in the middle, an ode to the, if you've ever been to Wayside, when the, the train comes by on the trestle on the opposite side of twenty-nine business, you can hear that train and see that train. One of the areas, the tallest area feature of the park, coming across the swinging bridge there on the playground, you will have binoculars there that you can actually, kids can get up there and they can see, and they can see that train, you can see it with your eyes, but you can also see it with that feature of the playground as well. It's ADA accessible, handicap accessible, it has, it's a ramped unit, as they call it in the playground world, so it has ramps where it's handicap accessible. So there's a lot of play value in this, in this playground. One note on the manufacturer, the company, the four playgrounds at the middle school parks were uninstalled by Game Time Playground, and in an effort to make sure that we were efficient with our money, especially the work put into, to obtaining grant funding, sometimes maybe take it too personally, the money that, that we have for the department. I reached out to some Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation friends in, in the state to find, to locate another kind of tier-one playground manufacturer to do some comparison. So we were able to locate Burke, we actually went to Roanoke, friends that are park planner in Roanoke, and also someone for the Roanoke City School System, they have someone that specifically does athletic fields and playgrounds, and that's all he does. And so we went up there and toured and looked at some of the playgrounds, and so Burke Playground, which is sold by All Recreation, All Recreation is out of Ashburn, North Carolina, the sales reps out of Harrisonburg. And so we, we had Game Time and Burke, you know, show us what they could do with our, within our budget, and we were most impressed with Burke and their creativity, they're a lot of play value in the playground for a little bit, a lesser of a cost, but not compromising the structure at all. So this is a, a tier-one playground manufacturer, and we are excited to go with them, and their creativity was really, really off the charts with this one, especially with the hundred-foot zip line. So you have swings there for all ages, have some handicap accessible swings there as well. So the playground will be a really nice feature there at the park. While I'm here and discussing the park, I wanted to also give an update on, on the rest of the, rest of the park and what we're doing. Along with the package that you have there, playground also features four picnic shelters, two will go, there'll be one on each side of that playground, and then there will be two that go out in the field that'll come a hundred foot off of the amphitheater there, and also there'll be a smaller one for the pickleball courts. So for efficiency's sake, we purchased those, they'll install those while they're there, they'll save us some money, and so having them come back, because the pickleball courts and the amphitheater in phase two, so they're, they're next summer and beyond, so we're going to go ahead and have those installed there as well. I've met on site with, with Jerry Heath, who's, who's our, the county's contractual landscaper, talk about landscaping the front entrance of the park, both entrances, some cleanup of overgrowth, some pruning of a few trees there to make that site more, more accessible. We have met with VDOT, VDOT has an extended right-of-way that covers the, the pull-off area there in front of, in the front of the park. VDOT has already tarred and gravelled that, that pull-off area and that entrance into the park, they did that the last couple of weeks. They also added some asphalt there, as the twenty-nine businesses have been paved over so many times, there is, there's a, there was an excessive drop off there, so they, they've made that look really nice. This week, they'll be removing that blue Wayside Park, Pennsylvania Wayside sign there, and we will come in right after that and install signs, Parks and Recreation signs at both the pull-off area and also the entrance into, back into the park. We've had good discussions with Dominion Power on bringing power into the park, they've been very, very good, and so hope to hear something from them this month on power into the park. I have met on site and had some preliminary discussions on the bridge there, and, and the structural integrity of it, and it looks like we're going to need to look into that further to make sure that we bring, we bring people into that park with our, all these features that we, had a safe bridge for them to cross over Sycamore Creek. Elton, you'll be proud of me, Virginia Correctional Enterprises, are you familiar with that? Very much. So Virginia Correctional Enterprises, they build, essentially, it's, the inmates build picnic tables, very nice picnic tables, very nice cast iron grills, things perfect for a park of this type, the things that they build go into our state parks, so there's a significant cost savings there, and I'll talk with, talk with the gentleman in Richmond about, about ordering from there, so when the time's right, we will, there'll be a significant saving on picnic tables and, and those kind of amenities. Met on site with Darryl Dalton about getting quotes to update the existing pavilion there, it's up on the hill, and also essentially rebuilding the existing restrooms there, there as well. And one other thing I wanted to, that's kind of evolved a few of the last couple, couple months, I had a meeting a couple of months ago with Travis Wood, who is the welding instructor at the Career and Technical Center, and they're the, he's the, he was my contact on building the dog, the metal dog park sign. And they are going, as you know, full force into Skills USA, they have twenty-five students, and actually, I think they're, they had a meeting today at three-thirty to really kick it off, they have twenty-five students in there, that Skills USA program. The Skills USA program has a award component where you have community projects that you can submit from the Career and Technical Center, and they're, I think they're March, when they go to the, to the state convention in March. And so what we are doing is that we are partnering with them on, to build a love sign for Wayside Park, and the love sign will go just off of the pull-off area, we'll pay for materials, obviously, it's going to be a, a school project, not just a welding project, electrical will be involved in it as well. So we're really excited to, to team with Travis and the Career and Technical Center again, principal's excited, talk with, talk with Jessica, and that's a project that would be installed around the February, March timeframe. They have, what, what will happen is, the students will research the, what each letter would be, I envision, you know, stacked stone in there, something to do with trains, there's a, there's a metal I-beam train trestle within a rocks throw from that area, so that's going to be a really neat piece to this project, and they're going to research the history of the project, they're going to make a presentation to Parks and Recreation on what they'd like to do, get input, I provided input, I will start to attend some of their meetings, I'm going to their, there's an open house this Thursday there at the Career and Technical Center. So that's a project that's just kind of come to, taken shape here in the last, last month or so. I've met on site with Travis at, at Wayside Park, and we, we talked extensively about where it would be and how this would all work, but this is a definitely, this is a great partnership, again, with our school system, to tie those kids into projects that are meaningful and lasting, like the dog park sign. So we're, we're excited to, to kind of think outside the box a little bit, and, and bring something unique to Wayside Park. I've talked to Virginia Tourism Corporation. I've talked to Virginia Tourism Corporation, there's a fifteen-hundred-dollar grant for love signs, and it's a reimbursable grant. So, um, talking with Ms. Harms, uh, she said that, um, this fits perfectly into that. And so what the plan is to, um, once the plans are together, to submit that to Tourism Corporation for reimbursable funds for that sign up to fifteen-hundred dollars. So, um, this is a, this is, this will be a Destination Park and Playground, as I've said. This is a really, really neat thing to be do- working on, um, in, in Parks and Recreation. Um, and, uh, you know, I was thinking about the presentation, this presentation today and kind of, you know, my eight-and-a-half years I've been here, and I can remember when I started, uh, I would, I would hear and people would tell me sometimes, you know, because it was important, and it is important to people, but they would say, you know, "You're from Tunstall, what's a Tunstall guy gonna, what's he gonna do for recreation in Hurt or Gretna or Dan River or Ringel?" And so as we took these projects off in each part, in the other parts of the county, I, I remember those things, and I think it's important to note that, you know, we're a Parks and Recreation for the entire county, and as I've told many people, we're all from somewhere. You know, I'm from, I went to Tunstall, but that doesn't make me, uh, any less, um, siloed in how I view recreation for the entire county. So, uh, the area that I grew up in on the, in the county on Ferry Road, geographically is probably as far, as far away from Hurt as you can possibly get, because it's right down on Old Mayfield, almost in North Carolina. So this project specific, especially because, um, this is a really neat project in the Hurt area and, um, was something that we've had for a long time, since the early eighties. And now we're really making headway into, uh, recreation in the Hurt community. Um, and it's exciting, and this is the, this is the first domino, so to speak, to fall for Wayside Park, the Wayside Park renovation. This will be the largest one. So the, the park project, uh, the, the Playground, uh, bid awarding, uh, is what's technically on your agenda, consent agenda tonight or any questions you have now. But I wanted to take this opportunity to give you some updates on Wayside Park and where we're going, because we're doing a lot of things, there's just not a lot of things that have sh- shown in the park yet. It's just a project like this takes a while. So I'll take any questions you have.
Any questions for the board? Yes, sir, Mr. Moore?
Uh, Mr. Moore, this looks great. From a parent of a four- or six-year-old, we take advantage of the Hawk Park right there in, right in the middle, all the time for our kids to play at. You know, I think you're exactly right, this should be a Destination where local parents will take their kids on the weekend and so forth. Um, speaking of being a parent, have you, the, the spot on the pavilions, is that where you kind of envision the parents sitting while the kids are playing? Cause I know a lot of the parks have benches and so forth. What do you think the pavilion?
So the reason that, the reason that the benches and the trashcans don't show on what you're looking at is because I can get them cheaper somewhere else. And so when I get prices, that, that price sheet you get, I, I know what I can get other places. And so I will peel away, alright, take the trashcans off, take the benches off, because I know I can get them cheaper. And what I will do is, I will order them and have them on site when their Playground installers are there. And for a nominal fee, they'll install the, the benches that I order from somewhere else. So I'm bringing every, every cent of savings I can out of the project, but all that will be part of it. Um, but as far as, so in Hawk Park, you know, the, the, uh, the shelter is separate because of the, the lay of the land. Um, in most others, there, the shelter is right up against the Playground, and it's because of that, it gives you shade and shelter for parents and, and just sit there and watch your kids. So you'll have one of those, envision what you have at Hawk Park, you'll have two of those, one on each side of this, this Playground. So the backside of that Playground is a hundred-and-twenty-five feet wide, so that, 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 um, zip line is a hundred feet. So the front of it's about fifty feet, so you go fifty feet to a hundred-and-twenty-five feet. So it's a, it's a large Playground with a lot of stuff in it.
And those big concrete panels?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore, uh, thank you very much, that's, that's what I'm gonna say, is, is once again, you're going out, got funding, and, you know, it's, well, obviously, it's like some wonderful additions to the county as a whole, but certain, to the northern county and, um, you know, that's a great return on your investment as far as the county's action counts in. So, uh, thank you, appreciate that.
The, the county's investment wouldn't have paid for this Playground. I mean, that's, that's, that's how much funding we have in this project from, from our partners, funding partners.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mike Starkey.
I'd just like to say a big thank you, um, for the effort this went into making this project a reality. This has been something that, um, I talked to Mike Irving many, many years ago, when the property was beaded over to the county, uh, with the restrictions that it has. And, um, I just, as a citizen and as a grandparent, I like Ben's question about how close his adventures to the swings. Because I, I actually, we take our grandkids to Parks now, and similar to this, in fact, I'm looking at someone's equipment, and I think maybe, uh, it's the same equipment I see in some other towns that we've visited, and they have grandchildren too. Uh, and I'm really excited about this. This is, this is gonna be really nice. I think we need to make mention also that this, this adjoins the, um, the new, uh, Rooker Park over there. And so hopefully as we move, um, business and industry into that park, it'll, part of this, that this park will continue to grow and have successful planning. I'm really excited about it. The love sign's a nice touch too, I like that. It's been a lot of love probably then over the years.
Yes, sir, Mr. Moore?
Uh, two things, I, I kinda, you don't give it no credit, but I, I know, ever since I've known his boy, Elton, this has been a dream of his.
Yes, and talk about that.
I think he's one of the key players, Elton, I appreciate you.
He is.
Sticking with it, you worked hard, and, and, but it's going down, it's went to a different level. I don't even think you envisioned what it is when you used to.
I didn't, I had no idea that we would, you know, I thought we'd probably spend a little money down there and get some rock and clean it up, and I was hoping for a part-time person to look, oversee it, so we wouldn't have so much riffraff in there. And, um, it's just been a place where some things that were not, uh, just to say comfortable for the community that were going on with, and people didn't wanna go, and I think this will change that, and I'm excited about it.
Hey, go ahead, and my next question, do we have a plan in place of the upkeep on the park? How are we gonna?
Yes.
Who's doing that?
We have, we have, we have the units.
Okay. I haven't really heard it stated, but I'm assuming.
Ho- ho- cast.
Well, I guess we'll have to have a crew.
We do. And, you know, you can, um, there are economic ways to, um, to, to add, um, they call it engine wood fiber Playground wash to these part, to these Playgrounds. You can get them blown in, and, so, uh, that's something we're doing at the other, our other locations as well. So, uh, the, the good thing about, um, one piece of this project that will come to fruition after it's done is, uh, we have funds for, uh, ten or fifteen hours a week for someone locally, to hire someone part-time locally in that community to go over, check trashcans, check toilets, you know, uh, walk through play equipment, see if there's anything that needs to be fixed, adjusted, that kind of thing. Um, similar to how we constructed the Middle School Parks, that, we built athletic fields at them. Um, and so when Holt goes to drag a field, the Playground is right there next to it, he can do all those things right there on site and not have to drive. That, that's, you know, with a small apartment, obviously, as we have, we have to really think about, um, where we place things, how we place them, and, and sustainability. Not just because it's what citizens want, cause I've said it many times, that the only thing worse than not, than, than not having something that's having and you can't maintain it, but funders wanna know that too. They wanna know how sustainability, maintenance. And that, so those are things that, that the funders wanna know as well, and we have to identify them in our, uh, application, um, for funding.
Also, thank you, Paul. I said, he talked about it, but you took it to a whole new level, I believe.
Well, you guys support it, and, you know, eight, two thousand and eleven, you were on, one of them on the board that, when I came here, so I'm thankful for support from the board. Um, you know, I remember initially this was a project that was, uh, we were looking at about seventy-two thousand dollars for the project. And I can remember sitting in Richard's office, talking, and I think he threw it out, "What if we did that over two years? What, how could, what kind of funding could we get grant-wise?" Um, and so that kinda, that got my wheels turning, and if, if we had a commitment like that, similar to what we have with the Middle School Park Project, then I know that there are funders that will, um, that will want to be a part of this project in Hurt. And, and so it, it evolved from seventy-two to now close to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm waiting on my zip line.
Okay.
I saw one advertised.
Might have one over St. Creek.
I have one here. Sure, I have one advertised for ninety-nine dollars, a hundred-foot zip line. I guess I might put my own up over there.
We could pull a ridge and you could zip line across.
Yeah. I don't think so, I'll get what Larry Harrow got left up in there, caught up in it. Thank you, Mr. Moore, I appreciate your, uh, presentation. No further discussion, moving right along to the review of the CSA year-end financials. Mr. Baldwin?
Good afternoon. So we finally got to the end of our fiscal year, which ended on September thirtieth. Um, we had to have all our final reports into the states so we could, I could sit down and kinda do our year-end totals. So this is our, um, I'm, it's super busy, so I wanted to be a lot more detailed than I am, but this is a pretty good overview for the year and where we're at. So first I'll talk about our supplemental allocations, which, um, when we start the year out, the fiscal year out, they give us a general, um, amount that they, they, the state funds us for the year. Um, and then we have to go back if we go over that, which most all localities do go over that, it's kind of the standard. Um, they don't wanna give us too much money, and, I have to take it back. Um, and so you can see that we have decreased over the years, so I have two thousand seventeen in green, two thousand eighteen in red, and two thousand nineteen in blue. So in two thousand seventeen, we asked for an additional five-point-nine million dollars. In two thousand eighteen, we asked for an additional three-point-nine, and then this year we only asked for an additional two-point-nine. So that has decreased from two thousand, two thousand, two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, that's a one-point-nine million dollar decrease. And from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, it's a one-point-oh-five million dollar decrease in how much we're asking for. So that just kinda shows how things have changed, and our trend, um, has changed over the last couple of years. The next slide is our, what we allocated. Um, so when it comes to time to do our budget for the year, I always get with Kim Vanderhyde, cause she's kinda like my financial guru, and, um, we always come up with an idea of what, how much we think we're gonna need. We wanna give ourselves a little cushion so that we don't have to come back to you all like we did one time and ask for extra money. So we try to make sure we put ourselves enough in there. Um, so last, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, we allocated seven-point-one million dollars towards, um, CSA. Um, in two thousand eighteen, we used six-point-one million dollars as our total, so we came nine-hundred-and-four thousand dollars under what we allocated for the year. In two thousand nineteen, uh, we had already allocated the same seven-point-one, um, and so this year our year-end total spending was five-point-five million dollars, which means we saved one-point-five million dollars from that seven-point-one that we originally allocated at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, um, we're still on a downward trend, not quite as much savings as, um, last year, but we're still, um, doing pretty well. The next slide shows our total spending over the last four years. So you can see from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, we had an increase of two-point-one million dollars. We went from a little over five million to seven. Um, and then that's when we started trying to figure out what, what we could do to decrease spending. So then from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, we decreased by nine-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. And then from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, so that would be this past fiscal year that we just finished off, um, we saved another six-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars. Um, so over the last two years, we've saved one-point-six million dollars, um, in spending from two, in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. I'm hoping to keep that same trend in two thousand twenty. Of course, um, there will be a point where there's not many more ends to cut, but we try to be responsible in our spending, um, in our meetings, and our board is doing the same. They ask questions now where they didn't used to. Um, if they don't understand something, I wonder why something costs so much money. Um, so I think that in general, they're just, um, we have a board that's much more ready to help me in making sure that we're being physically responsible. So I think we're doing well with that. The last slide I went ahead and put in there, and I'm gonna do some more work on this, but like I said, I only had a short amount of time to kinda get all this together. Um, this shows our education spending over the last four years. So it looked like from two thousand sixteen to seventeen, we had a decrease, and then we jumped back up. But over the last two years, we've pretty much been, um, right around the same. I think that two thousand eighteen, we spent three-hundred-and-ten thousand, three-point-one million dollars on, um, education, and two thousand nineteen, we spent two, like, three-point-two. So it was right around the same. And then at the bottom, I'll put the amount of children that we were serving, so we're kinda in the same ballpark, just cost thrive. But the state did put a cap on this past year. They started it in two thousand eighteen, they don't allow for education costs as private day spending to go over two percent. So, um, anytime that a, um, school tries to go over two percent, I have to call them and tell them they have to, um, change their rates, cause they're not allowed to by the state, um, state law. So, and I haven't, honestly, none of them even tried to go above that. I did have one that screwed it in, and they actually called me. It's not a place that we ever really use, so they actually called me and said, "What do I need to do?", and they're updating everything to get within that two percent. Um, so that, I think that helps kinda cap that school spending a little bit, but, um, but we're seeing it kinda level off, and I'm hoping to make sure this thing.
Is education spending always private day, or are there other ways?
There are, there are a few other ways that it is spending. Like ninety-five percent of it is private day spending. The other five percent, you look at the kids that we have in a residential setting, so we're staying in a facility, those kids are, are paying for their education as well while they're in that facility. That's usually the only other time that we're paying for education besides our private day costs.
So eighty-two, with three-point-one million or three-point-two divided by eighty-two, I just did the math, so we're spending right under forty K a year per child.
That's about right. About, usually about four or five thousand dollars.
That's a pretty good colleague. I, that's what I was like. Is it, is that, is that typical around the state, or?
I think everybody's in the same, um, you know, and going to conferences and talking with other coordinators, um, we're all kinda in the same sort of, everybody's paying a lot for private day. A lot of, um, a lot of the cost is private day. I mean, you look at, um, you know, our total cost this year was a little over five million, and over three of that was just in private day. So you look at our other residential services, community-based services, everything else we're doing, working with these families and kids is, is less, you know, we're only looking at around two, give or take, two million that we're spending on that, the rest is all going towards education.
Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock?
As someone who's been aboard for a pretty good while, I can remember when these costs continued to escalate. And we would get requests in the middle of the year, I remember one specific request was six-hundred-and-some thousand dollars that we hadn't graduated. And I remember when you started, and you have, and, you know, it's, sometimes you leave a meeting feeling a little guilty, because I was one that screamed the loudest about the spending, but I didn't know enough about it to offer you ways to correct it. You were hired, and you've done a wonderful job in getting this under control. And I, and I know the board as a whole says thank you for that, because this is something that was way out of control when it came, way out of control.
Yes, sir, Mrs. Gess?
Kinda wanna echo, and I've been working with you for the last few years on the CPMT and the hard work that you and your staff have put in on, on getting a handle on these costs has been outstanding. And I thank, uh, Mr. Hicks also for being chairman of the CPMT, he's done a great job for us this year as well, so thank you. And, and your staff, make sure they don't have much, we appreciate all you guys have done.
That's just kind of a recap of, of everything, and, um, we continue to, hopefully saving money, but working with families, we're doing what we did.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's not only about saving money, it's about the services that the children and families receive. And we're saving money, but we're also providing the services that's required and needed.
Well, we're working hard to make sure that, who, the providers that we're using in our community, that they are, um, doing the job that they are tasked to doing, and they're doing it well. And when they're not, we're calling them on it. And, you know, if we have a continual issue with a certain provider, we are trending towards not using them, we do surveys, um, and then we present those to the board. So, I mean, we're moving with whatever's working. Um, the same thing when we work with families, if something's not working, don't just throw a monkey hat, it changes direction, fixes the problem. Then, and, you know, if you gotta trial and error multiple times, that's what you have to do, but you don't wanna just keep doing the same thing with any goal. But you don't want to just keep doing the same thing with any goal.
Yes, sir, Mr. Palmer.
You hinted a little bit towards my question. I should say, first off, thank you, and you're doing a great job. Every time you come in, it looks like, um, the savings just keep trending in the right direction, like you said. My question was, though, um, in your opinion, you know, any business or anything you do in life, the less you spend, maybe there's a fear of losing quality or something. Do you have any doubts that we're not missing our quality?
I don't think so, because some of the vendors that we use, they're not the cheapest vendor, but we're getting the best results. So we may be paying a little bit more, but instead of a kid having services for a year and a half, two years, they're only having services for nine months to a year. And so we're cutting that spending by not having to keep them in place as long they're able to come in and get the job done, and then we can close that case and move on to help the next child. Um, so that's what we're seeing. I mean, because, um, you know, and really vendors are usually within a, a range. You don't, I mean, you rarely have one that's like way out there. They're all kind of within that range.
And am I correct by saying the Victory Jump, not Victory, the Victory Camp that we started in Chatham?
Victory Academy.
Academy. I mean, that's still a partnership that's helping with maybe the numbers.
Yeah, I think that the numbers, where we're seeing our numbers are looking more stagnant, um, from, in the last two years, because the Victory Academy and Source Program just opened up, um, within the last couple of years. So I think where we're seeing that, we're not seeing a rise, um, I think it's because we're able to, um, you know, get these kids to go in here and keep them from going, I mean, there are still cases where they're going to end up, there's no other solution, or they've gone through the academy multiple times and we don't have any other options. But in the past, where we didn't have an option but private day, we now have a couple options to try that may work, and these kids can end up back in the public schools without having to go into the private day school and cost, had that like forty thousand dollar a year cost.
You know what? Um, a couple things, Paul. Uh, I remember four years ago, when I was on first, uh, the board of CPMT, that was one of my big concerns, uh, when I would look at it, that there would be such a large disparity between one vendor and the other vendor for the day service. And actually Sheriff Taylor was serving, he and I started really questioning, you know, what do we get for the difference? And nobody could ever tell us that. And as it turned out, then a lot of them were getting exactly the same service from each one, but there was, you know, vast difference in the day of cost. So I was happy to hear you say that you all paid attention to that, making sure and getting those prices down.
Yeah.
And, and you said something about the state is now trying to control that to make them even at a two percent rate.
They do. They can only increase by two percent each year. And we have to actually, each year in August, I have to send in to the state, all the private day schools that we use, I have to send in their rate increase for the year. And so they monitor all of that. And so it will, um, it's on, on a system, so it, when we put it in, it'll, it'll pop, pop it back to you and say, "This is more than two percent," which we didn't have any of that, we're more than two percent. But it would kick it back and so that you would know you need to go back to that vendor and negotiate the rate.
Do they automatically go up roughly two percent, or they have to justify?
I think they're doing that standard two percent, what they can get probably. But I think in the past, we were, I haven't done enough research to, you know, go back and look at rates that far back, but I think they were probably increasing at a higher rate than that in the past.
Yeah, I know the Victory Academy and, uh, have been pretty successful in helping control these costs. Is there any conversation between you all and the school system about increase in the numbers of children they can serve within that day program? Because they can do it a lot cheaper, and from the data that I've seen, they can get them back into the mainstream, which would really reduce the cost compared to the day services. There's a lot of that being discussed, but you all know that.
I think their, their, uh, baseball is fun.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, that's not something, you know, with what the state allocates of what we can spend money on, we can't perforate money to help us. But even though in the long run, it would probably help us, but that's not really an allowable expenditure. But, um, there has been talks, and, and I'm working on, hopefully within the next year, having a larger, like, strategic plan for the community on, um, how we work, like, with social services and how we work with the school system. Um, so, you know, there's, there's talk out there, and, and, and we're working on stuff, but, you know, and I'm, I'm willing to assist in any way I can. Um, but a lot of stuff when it comes to education, it's all guided by the IEP. Um, it's not really guided by the staff team or even the CPMT board. It's guided by the IEP, and we're kind of bound by the decisions of that.
One or two more questions. You're seeing these numbers that have trended down. From a state level, have you seen your counterparts, are they trending down, or are they still trending to disaster like we were?
I think they're still trying to figure out what Fitzman can do.
Yeah, there, um, most, I mean, I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't have a lot of time to, to look and see what others, but I have had calls from probably four different localities, um, asking to either phone conference with them or talk with their financial manager or director, um, and what we're doing to change, to kind of turn around, because we're, a lot of them are in the same boat that we're in now. Um, and, and a lot of what I've told them is really, you just have to really bear down and decide, you know, put some, some regulations, then kind of how your standards of how you're going to do things and stand by it, and just question things, and, um, you know, just slowly begin to turn the ship around, I guess you'd say.
Well, I, I think that's the point Sheriff Taylor and I tried to make four years ago was, you know, that person needing to be monitored like we do with anything else, and hold those vendors accountable and all that good stuff. So it sounds like you all are doing that, and I knew that, that then all of us reached out to you, but I wasn't sure everybody else here, uh, in particular in the media, knew that, you know, we're getting something right in the county, and I appreciate it very much. And it looks like, when I, when I look at the numbers of how much we're spending on children, you know, uh, we might be able to work with the school system and save even more money if we can reduce that three point one, three point two million dollars we're spending in the year, they can do it more efficiently.
And you've got something on your agenda this evening there. You know, you think, um, I think they'll be adding additional facilities, like, uh, school, that cover and all that.
See, it's on consent. We own the building and the leases, they have to give permission for us to modify the building. Where the gym is, they're not messing with the gym. On that side where there's space, they're adding three new big, I believe, the classroom spaces or four.
And I thought of Dr. Jones about that. That's not going to increase the capacity like, um, Fisher and Sheriff said. It is a function of staff, um, uh, staff appropriations. But incidentally, day code is really starting to track these things. I have noticed that the average is about forty thousand dollars a child throughout the state of these outlays and services. So we're not out of whack there. One of the things that the rest of the state does do is put money through the school system to defer these kids, like we're trying to do now. So yes, it is something that I think we're going to want to talk more about in the next budget. But I will say, I remember being in this room before it had carpet and we sat up there and bringing about a four hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar request at the end of the fiscal year, Mr. Blackstock was finally his chairman. And that was the moment of truth. Right after that, we hired, we, we hired a consultant that pointed out some things. Richard became chair. Cheryl had her marching orders, and, you know, ninety-nine percent of what the results we see today is because of her. And, um, I've said several times, she had a tiger by the tail when she got this job.
Oh, yeah. This had already happened before I got here.
She's wrestling.
Yeah.
That's right. So she is, the, the transformation in the program and in Cheryl's skill sets are outstanding. We witnessed it in only about thirty months.
And I think we have some opportunity there. It seems like her last two budget cycles, estimate versus actual, she's been under a million dollars.
Oh.
So we have some room to maybe allocate it.
It helped in this year's budget, just bouncing.
And we'll probably allocate, I have not got, got with him yet. We haven't quite gotten to that part of the budget for next year yet, that, that time, but, um, we probably will allocate less, you know, we won't need to allocate as much because even, I mean, I like to let Lou the little room, because you never know, because a lot of variables are there, you know, the amount of foster care kids and those kind of things, which are not, um, that's something about the judge.
What was going to the school system, toward that purpose.
Yeah, compared in that direction, for sure. Absolutely.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scales.
Well, yeah, one thing, just so you guys know, I talked to Dr. Jones, and I know the Victory School, uh, he's working, uh, really closely with the, uh, State Education Department. And this is going to be sort of like the, you know, standard, they're going to try to do these things across the board, from what I understand, but they're using us as this model. So this is a pretty big deal for us, I think, in, in our support of that whole endeavor. So just keep in mind, this is going to probably go across the state, what we're doing here.
Yeah. It cost us about six million dollars. So they did do a right, we'll charge them as much.
We should still get that rebated, that's.
I'd be wondering. She'd been here all week, we had a problem.
Mr. Chairman, I would add, both of these two, uh, positive life too, I think, just have to be on my side.
And, well, were you the same guy, I asked you to?
He's Peter and Paul.
Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
I see you and your husband in Perkins occasionally. I've avoided paying for your dental, but we're trying to prime on this board. If next year I'll be off the board, I'll take care of your dental, Perkins. And Richard, I'll see you at McDonald's and I'll take care of it.
Uh, well, since all these politicians want to take credit in your success, I do recall that, uh, I agree with Mr. Blackstock, because he and I and Warren at the time were extremely long with the figures, figures that we were looking at. I definitely was, and I remember it very well. And, uh, you were somewhat in question, and the ones who are praising you today, some of, I will not mention all of them, to be politically correct today, I'm not going to rat them out, there was a certain amount of question. But I do remember this one, right here saying that I believe in you. And you have succeeded, and I want to thank you for what you've done. A job well done. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, discussion on the SVMP timber harvesting. Mr. Tim Barber, Tom from this.
Yes, sir. Um, I've been, it's been a thought on my mind for years, and the timber grows, it continues to mine. Um, the timber on that Berry Hill Park, it was planted before we actually purchased one of them, and it's, it's just about front of that harvest stage. And I just happen to have a, a Volvo, one day was up at my shop, we rode it down, and I said, "Right there, look at this thing." In his opinion, it was a lot of marketable timber, it was probably some of the marketable timber. What I think we ought to do going forward, maybe, uh, probably do a consultant, we ought to talk to a consultant, some of consultants, and maybe put this stuff in a management plan, because one of the things this guy mentioned was maybe do a commercial thinning, and then as we, sites were going to go, go ahead and cut them, and then the rest of the land, because I mean, you're talking about a lot of money here, it's a big piece of park, that's a lot of money sitting on the table that we could use. I mean, at a minimum, you're talking about a thousand dollars acre. I, I'd say more than it was a bit marketable timber on that property.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, just so you know, uh, the dam of Fitzman County, Reed, one of the industrial facilities authority that had this discussion some time ago, and was waiting, at that time, timber prices were not up. They're certainly up now. It was discussed at our meeting today, uh, because all this land is technically owned by RFA.
Yes, sir.
Looking into this and trying to get a study and a plan to.
I think the two left, one is eight, two thousand. Two picture of the site.
Yep.
And the other one is two thousand eighteen. If you're looking at the difference between the two pictures.
I, I know the last time when they created, when they created a big site, we, they pushed all the timber up, and that was money just gone.
We did do, um, timber study on, on the grade in Lot Four, and, and the contractor, the cruiser came back and said it wasn't enough marketable to be worth the value of timber. But that particular, because it's been cut over the whole.
Right.
But not all of it has been cut over.
Well, me and myself and Richard, today, we rode it down, it was pretty good timber on it.
Yeah, we were on basically lot five, six is where we turned around. Just so you know, Lot Five, I understand about twenty to twenty-five acres of Lot Five is going to be used as a borrow area to expand the pad on Lot Four. So yes, we can harvest that timber now. We have active projects on Lot Six and Seven, um, but I think have, if RFA can get together a timber management plan for the soul of ninety-five hundred acres, it would be good use of our time.
Well, just, you know, just again, for this board, RFA, especially today, was not only one less problem, but a whole problem.
Can't create.
Now, I should be reading if someone waves it. More. Any further discussion? Good talk. Moving on, just move along. Fire rescue policies and procedures committee recommendation of Mr. Ron and Scales.
Well, telling you the word now here today, we had a, a procedures committee, uh, a couple of the main issues that we were going over, uh, we're going to send a letter out to all the fire departments. Some of you guys probably weren't aware that we have split the county up into four quadrants. So we're sending out a letter to our department, we're going to try to get them to come together and give us at least, uh, ten to four representatives for the fire commission we're trying to put together, uh, for our, so that when we, we come together in November, hopefully we can have a good list of people to pick for that commission. Just keep in mind, I will be in touch with the fire departments and emphasize how important this is, because this is, uh, this commission's going to be making a lot of, uh, hard decisions in the, in a short period of time, and one of the big things, the budget is coming up, uh, starting process in November. So it's really important that this commission gets set up with good people. So I will get in touch with the fire departments, and, uh, once this letter goes out, make sure that they follow through on that. The other thing is, uh, Rescue One apparatus, I think we had a, about a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, repair cost that they're going through, and I think we'll probably make the decision once it's repaired to sell it. So that's, uh, just an update on the cost on that. And, uh, I guess one other, I think that was pretty much it, wasn't it? Was there anything else?
Chris, anything you missed?
We just talked about apparatus, uh, replacement, uh, cost. I believe that, I think that was pretty much it. Allowing the departments, because, you know, right as it is right now, if, uh, we do a fire department money this fiscal year, they obviously have to spend it this fiscal year for fire cut. And because we don't fund so much of that, they have to get their ducks in a row. I actually, it's, some of, and I actually had a conversation with one of them today, I just told him, um, they're, you know, they can't afford their side of the animal chair. So I said, "Well, it'd help if we, you know, we gave them more time to spend." And they said, "Absolutely." And I was, I think the general consensus was, "What you do, you know." I think in the years past, that was.
What are you going to do, set your money aside in capital?
Airmark for the department.
One of the things I pushed hard for is make sure we actually put that money into true capital, uh, for future stuff. There's a lot of things I see coming down the road, so, and build this capital accounts. I'm going to keep kicking it down the road, not have it.
Any more discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Palmer?
And Mr. Scales, you said talk about fire departments, what, Rescue as well?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And maybe in the, um, Friday update, will we get a copy of the letter that's sent out?
Sure.
And then maybe a copy of the quad breakdown?
Sure. Yeah, definitely. I probably, the, the, the fire departments have said.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. But I would tell you, some of them are starting to meet and start talking about candidates, and, you know, I tell you up in that north east quadrant, they, they talked to me and brought us some very strong candidates, and what I think would be very, very, very positive
people to participate and work on more moves.
This is the first step on getting the county's fire and rescue on the right track, so if we can get this commission set off on the right foot, they're going to have to be making a lot of policy decisions right off the bat, so it's going to be really important that they get quality, uh, members that we have to approve to be on this commission. So I will talk to your fire departments and, um, I get it.
Any further discussion? Let me ask one question, uh, just to make sure. How many people are we supposed to be recommending to this committee? Is it one out of fire, the fire operations, or is it one civilian, or is it both, or one supervisors, quarters?
Well, in each, in each of those territories, you have one fire and/or EMS representative and one citizen.
Okay, I understand that. Which one are we looking at?
Well, we'll need four citizen representatives, so we don't have one from each district.
We don't.
One from each quadrant. So by the same token, you know, police think about citizens that would be needed to fill these seats.
Okay, so we'll put in several recommendations for the four citizens slot, okay.
Four citizens, four fire and rescue, one board of supervisors.
And the fire rescue.
Nine member group.
Can you explain all this to the fire department?
The fire rescue folks can also give you representatives of citizens.
Okay.
Four fire and rescue representatives, four general citizens, one supervisor.
But that letter's at two to four.
We're asking.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're trying to build a pool, that's exactly.
So we owe this to you.
I think we put November eighth, is when we wanted to get that, so we get it on the next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Slim.
I, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
I was a little late to your, our company. Are we wanting to take, let's say we get twenty names, are they gonna fill out something, or how, how are we gonna?
Yeah, we didn't, we don't have an application process, it's not a bad.
Yeah, well, I mean, we all, I mean, hypothetically, you know.
No, it's a group.
We don't, we, we don't know, we don't really know the person.
We'd like. We need to add that to the letter. Yeah. Chris and I'll come up with that, a little one-page application. These are my qualifications, this is why I want to serve, because if we get twenty-four nominees, it'd be good to.
You shouldn't have been at me.
These nominees are coming from the fire departments and the community.
Yes.
And they will be forwarded to us.
Yes, so they're gonna be forwarded to the fire and rescue commission, and the fire rescue commission is gonna nominate a slate for the board's supervisors.
You mean, the policy committee?
Yeah, 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 it's his group, yeah.
Fire and rescue.
Fire and rescue policies, procedures. I think I should be sure of the name of that committee.
All right.
Well, Mr. Slim, I like you got enough history.
I'm sure Kayla has a template we can rip off of.
I'll fill it out, send it to him, he'll send it back to Chris, and I'll follow it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Slim. Appreciate it. Do we have any other reports? Counselor, thank you, up next.
Yes, um, we have one closed session item tonight, actually, Mr. Slim just notified me that he wants to add two additional projects to the subject matter, projects MEP and 500. So we have seen a motion concerning discussion of a prospective business or industry that expands a existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating and expanding its facilities in the community, ruled with already for GEDCO, section two point two, thirty-seven eleven eight five, subject matter projects AF, uniform, MEP and 500. Purpose, discussion of prospective business, businesses slash economic development updates. We have a motion, second and discussion.
With the motion moved in the closed session. Same by Mr. Scares, same, same by Mr. Warren, any further discussion?
So that's, Mr. Hunter, you sure we don't need to have a motion for a mandatory agenda?
Well, you can.
I'm just asking from a legal point.
I think we're fine. We just think.
So, have we closed?
No, we had a motion, uh, Scares, second by Mr. Warren, any further discussion? Any known?
Please cash your vote. All votes in the cast, now we're closed.
Be resolved at meeting the Fitzman County Board Supervisors on October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the board hereby certifies by reported vote that the best needs board members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, if any board members leave there's departure from the requirements of the act, each shall so stay prior to the vote indicating substance of departure. The statement shall be reported to the board's manager, Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Dr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.